Hello listeners, welcome to Plano's Political Pitbulls Podcast. I am Esther.
And I'm Ruth.
And today we are going to talk all about Texas and Plano issues. But first, our sponsor is Southwest Pain Management. Southwest Pain Management takes care of most chronic pain without paying pills. Their goal is to get you back to doing the things you love. They are also the world's leading long COVID experts. Dr. Groisman sees people from all over the world to treat their long COVID. Southwest Pain Management is in Plano. Please go to their website, reliefbeginshere.com. That's reliefbeginshere.com to see all that they do. So, the Democrats, the Texas state legislative Democrats, House Democrats have fled the state of Texas. I don't know why you would want to leave Texas. But they have fled Texas. And some have gone to New York. Others have gone to California. Others have gone to Illinois. Pretty much, they've gone all the deepest, bluest states you could go to. And why? Why couldn't tell? Did they do that? Do you know?
Because they wanted to stall and, um, not stall. They wanted to run out the clock for the special session.
Yes, we are in the midst of a special session. Special sessions last for 30 days. We went over some of the things that are on the governor's agenda. It's a long list for a 30-day special session. Top priority, number one on the list was flooding relief and a warning system. And further down on the list was redistricting. Now, the Democrats, they didn't have an issue with flooding relief or most of any other things, but they-
Well, no, why weren't you? Most of it was bipartisan.
Yes, but they did have an issue with the redistricting. And because they are a minority, they knew that they would not get the votes to stop the bills on redistricting. So, they broke what we call quorum. Quorum means you have to have sort of like a super majority. So, that majority to do business in the House is 100 legislatures. Well, we don't have 100 Republicans. If we had 100 Republicans in the House, this would not be an issue. But we need the Democrats to make quorum so that they can do business on the floor. And to slow things down, gum up the works, they have fled. And their reason for fleeing was, in their words, "to support democracy." Because the redistricting was an attack on democracy. And they were afraid, really, in my view. They were afraid that their minority was going to shrink even further down.
Well, yeah, that's what-
The racial level.
Well, yeah, that's what this is really about. They're afraid of their own debt. They're afraid of their own seats. They're not afraid about democracy. Because every state just does gerrymandering. It's been done since the Constitution was first founded. It's nothing new. People have been complaining about it for years, decades.
Since the first time it was done.
Yeah. It's not a new debate or new complaint. Um, and I see the sheet you have. Even the states of which they fled to have horrendous gerrymandering themselves just to the other way.
So, a little history on this. You know, I love my history. So, the first guy to gerrymander was actually, his last name was Jerry. Hence where the name came from. He was a framer. He was at the Constitutional Convention. If you go to Philadelphia, you will see his statue in a building which is across from Independence Hall. And he was from, I believe, the state of Massachusetts. Don't quote me on that part. But one of those New England states. And he gerrymandered his district so badly in favor of himself that the district looked like a salamander. That is how bad this was gerrymandered. And that's who it's named after. Good old Jerry. So, while the Democrats are complaining that we have gerrymandered down here, they went to states, some states, that have gerrymandered so bad. There are no Republican congressmen. So, Massachusetts, 30%-
Thirty-six percent.
I'm sorry, 36% of people voted Republican in the last election. Zero seats are Republican for Congress. In Connecticut, 42% Republican. Zero Democrat congressional seats. Maine, 46. But Maine has none.
New Mexico.
New Mexico. New Hampshire, Rhode Island, Vermont, Hawaii, and Delaware.
All zero seats.
All zero seats, Republican. But in-
New Hampshire is like, they're nearly at 50%. Uh, New Hampshire, 48% Republican, but zero seats. That's nearly 50% and they got zero seats. That's bad.
All of these are in the 40%. So, almost half of their population voted Republican or are registered Republicans. But they have no Republican representation in Congress. So, also, as to some of the blue states that were benevolent enough to give a smidgen of Republicans some seats. California, 38% Republican. They only have nine seats that are Republican-held out of 52. Illinois, which some of the Texas Democrats went to, 44% Republican, only three seats are Republican-held out of 17. New York, 43% Republican, only seven seats are held by Republicans out of 26. Now, little Maryland, they only have eight seats. Republicans only hold one seat out of 34% of people who voted Republican. And New Jersey and Oregon, same issue. So, New Jersey has 12 seats, three are Republican-held with 46% of voters, residents voting Republican. And 41% of Republicans live in Oregon. But they get a big old one seat. And let me tell you, most of Oregon is all red except for teeny, tiny, little city, Portland. That's the blue dot.
Now, let's compare that to Texas.
Texas, yes. Texas is mostly red. But we do have, in the big cities, some Democrats. Jasmine Crockett, she's in Dallas. Now, her seat is threatened because they have basically threatened to move her out of her district. We've got Democrats in Houston, in Austin, San Antonio, El Paso. So, please. Texas has more Democrat representation than most of the, than some of the states that they fled to. I mean, that have no Republic, but have no Republican states. So, seats, no Republican seats. So, can we say hypocrites?
Well, it's not even about that. Gerrymandering isn't a party issue. It's a politician issue. It's a, "I'm afraid my seat is going to be taken from me. I feel this is an attack on me. And I'm scared for my job. So, I'm going to leave so that my seat does not get taken away." That's what this is. They're afraid that they're going to get voted out via their district being more Republican.
So, I don't know if this is going to affect the districts that the legislatures in Texas are in. This definitely will affect the congressional seats. But the Democrats don't want to lose any more power than they already have. And, you know, Texas did grow. We're actually, in this redistricting, going to be adding five more seats because we have grown so much. Now, I know you're all thinking, but it's not a census year. We typically do this during the census. What the media-
It's probably also that too. But that might also be why they might feel attacked too about this and so strongly about this and kind of feel threatened. And that's why they fled because they don't want, you know. They're worried. I mean, next year is going to be an even year, midterms.
Yes, midterms, exactly.
And so, they're worried.
Yes. So, how did this all come to be? Why are we doing this in a non-census year? Here's what the media has forgotten to tell everybody. And it drives me bonkers. So, there was a court case, a lawsuit in Galveston called Petway versus Galveston County, Texas. And I'll spell that name because I might be saying it wrong. This case challenged Galveston County's redistricting practices concerning their Commissioners Court and Justice of the Peace Courts. Here's why this is impactful for now. The case centers around allegations of the county's historical discrimination against Black and Latino voters in county-wide elections. The 2020 census revealed significant population growth within these minority groups in Galveston County. But wait, this has nothing to do with congressional seats. Ah, wait for it. So, this moved, uh, this case moved up to the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals. They ruled on coalition districts. A key development in 2024's ruling by the Fifth U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals in this case. This ruling stated that the Voting Rights Act's protections do not apply to racial and ethnic groups that have combined their ranks to form a majority in a district. This decision reversed years of precedent and has significant implications for how minority voting rights are protected in Texas, Louisiana, and Mississippi. This is what triggered the redistricting. Also, what triggered the redistricting here is a recent letter from the Department of Justice citing "this decision has spurred new redistricting efforts in Texas at the state level." The DOJ's letter argued that certain congressional districts are now unconstitutional because they were originally drawn based on federal court orders to create minority coalition seats. And this is according to Democracy Docket. So, the statewide implication is that it has set a new precedent for interpreting the Voting Rights Act applicable to coalition districts. So, there was a lawsuit. The lawsuit found that, and really, in my view, you shouldn't make a district all one color or all one race or all one religion. It should be based on, oh my gosh, population. And the Democrats originally sued over this. So, now, the state is the result of that lawsuit.
Wait. They're mad that the state listened?
Yes. Yes.
How dare you respond to my complaint?
Actually, in, the governor has said that, so what the Democrats are saying is that they're redrawing the lines and they're still racist. I don't know how you can redraw lines and lines can be racist. The lines are drawn not because of race or any kind of thing that nobody can control. They're drawn based on party affiliation. The politicians don't care what race or religion you are.
They just want your vote.
They want to know, "Who do you vote for?" Or "What party do you vote for?" If you've got a district that is drawn so that 80% of it is Democrat, guess who's going to win that district? A Democrat. Flip side, if you've got a district that's 80% Republican voters, guess who's going to win that district? Republicans.
And that's kind of where the gerrymandering comes in because they can regulate so the districts are lent to one side.
Exactly. And, you know, this whole idea of, of, you know, "Oh, you're taking away the Black vote or you're taking away the Hispanic vote." One of the districts that was redrawn has more Hispanics in it than it did before.
Well, also, guess what? If one particular race tends to lean Democrat and all those in this district has, this area has a lot of that race and, oh, look, a lot of them, majority vote Democrat, guess what's going to happen? Or vice versa?
Well, actually, now, the Hispanic population is actually going more Republican because they're realizing that their conservative values of family and faith and tradition align more with the Republicans than the Democrats. So, that Hispanic district may be rough.
But yeah, they don't care what your religion, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, they, they don't care. They just want you to vote for them. And in Texas, which is majority Republican, they're going to look for those clusters of red. And, you know, I feel like we're getting off topic anyway. It's like, this doesn't even, because none of this even matters. Because gerrymandering is going to happen either way. I get that they're afraid that their, that the, their little, the Democrat minority is going to shrink more. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. I don't know, probably will. But, but the problem, I, I really don't care about this. The problem I have is the fact that they're letting this little thing that every single state goes through, every single one, no one is safe, is stopping them from getting to items that are really important, like flood relief. We just had a massive natural disaster. So many people dead. And they're stopping the legislation from moving forward in creating legislative legislation to prevent the tragedy from ever happening again. And that is what makes me so mad.
Yes. And our very own representative from HG70, she is a Democrat here. HG70 is in Collin County. It's the only Democrat seat. She has gone to New York. New York, which has only seven Republican-held congressional seats.
At least not more than zero.
Out of 26. And because of, she's not down here, yeah, legislation is being held up. Her district is not being represented right now. It has no rep. And she keeps saying, doing all these interviews, how, "Oh, no, our founders in Texas, they wanted us to use this rule about breaking quorum." I don't think so. I, I, I'm not even sure if they would ever do this. They wanted to have the debate.
Even so, would they really want legislation, uh, uh, the session to stop when one of the items is on flood relief?
And preventing another-
And prevention.
Disaster from happening? How, how do you, how do you sleep at night? How do you sleep at night, Representative? Obviously, Speaker of the Texas House, the governor are fed up. And the governor has said, "We're going to arrest you. They're coming after you." They have gotten the FBI involved. They're going to drag them back.
Can they do that?
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Under what grounds?
They have abandoned their seat. And they are holding the state hostage, basically. So, yes, they can go and they can arrest, have them arrested, drag them back, and lock them in the Capitol if need be. Also-
Have that ever happened before?
I think so, yes. Actually, it has. But it happened at the federal Capitol.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, one guy, he, um, the Democrats, I know, it was a Republican. The Republicans didn't want to take a vote. They needed to take this vote. So, they also need to have quorum. So, one guy went and he hid in his office, under his desk. Senator Byrd was-
Like a child.
Yeah. Senator Byrd was the, I believe, the minority leader at the time. He called the Capitol Police. They broke down the guy's door and dragged him out of his office, kicking and screaming.
Oh, my gosh.
So, yes, this is, this has precedent. I can do this. But they are fining now, the Democrats, $500 a day. And now, if they want to get their paychecks, because the Constitution says that you have to pay them. I don't know why you have to pay people who don't show up for work. If I didn't show up for work, I wouldn't get paid. But I guess the Constitution didn't make that little caveat, "Only if they're present."
They didn't think of that. They thought it was implied.
Yeah. So, they're not showing up. They, money, you know, nobody has paper checks anymore. We all do direct deposit now. Well, the speaker has now announced that there will be no more direct deposits. So, if they want their money, they have to come down and pick up a check, which they will promptly be arrested and hauled onto the floor of the House.
Oh, my gosh.
And it's going to get very expensive because they don't get much money. I think it's like $200 a day or something, not including office expenses and all that. I think they've even threatened to cut off the pay of the staff and the office and everything of each of their offices. But it's going to get really expensive because they're going to not be getting any money. And they're going to be staying at hotels and eating out. And I don't know how they're going to live. Who's going to support them? Because it's against the law to financially support them. So, uh, the Attorney General is looking into, "How do we call these seats abandoned and basically kick them out of office?" He's looking into that. And then, we can just, the governor can just get new guys in there, appoint new guys and gals, and hopefully get something done. Because he's just going to keep calling session after session after session until they get this stuff on the list done.
Yeah.
We'll keep you updated. It's very fun.
This could get crazy. This could get insane.
I think it's already there.
It could get more insane.
So, we have an update on the antisemitism in Plano's schools. I know, but we got to talk about it.
I'm tired of it.
Okay, I know. So, we have some good news, if there is any good news in this fight. Congressman Keith Self and Congressman Pat Phelan, they wrote a joint letter to the district. I'm just going to read some parts of the letter. If you want to read the whole letter for yourself, which I always recommend you do your own homework. You can go and see the letter on Congressman Keith Self's official Facebook page. He has the little letter posted there. So, some things he says. Quote, "It is a sad reality that the reports of antisemitism have become increasingly common within the district, even getting noticed outside of our community and even outside our nation. The leadership of Plano ISD is responsible for ensuring that the district complies with all relevant federal and state laws and regulations in order to protect the health, safety, and well-being of the students. As a recipient of federal funding, the district must comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, which prohibits discrimination based on race, color, sex, or national origin. A Supreme Court decision affirmed that antisemitism is not a religious issue but one of race and national origin. It matters not whether they light serbot candles. Jews were among the peoples that considered to be a race and hence within the protection of the statute." Actually, uh, you can trace back your DNA. You're actually a Jewish gene. So, just goes to show, we're a race.
You might secretly be Jewish and not know it.
I know, look at that. "The laws are quite clear in that it is the administration's responsibility to protect those who would be bullied and harassed. And it further has a responsibility not to blame the victims," he says. He continues, "We have become aware of numerous instances of antisemitic behavior by students, teachers, within approved curriculum, and in at least one instance by the school administration itself. It appears that each instance has been treated as a one-off event. But this isn't the case of violations by one group or one school. The district has six high schools, of which five, Clark, Vine, Shepton, Jasper, and McMillan, have reported incidents. And all three of the senior high schools, Plano, Plano East, and Plano West, also have reported, reports, as well as at least five middle schools and three elementary schools." What the heck is left? "These incidents correspond only to the reported and documented cases, which clearly would not refer to all experiences as the U.S. Department of Education studies that as much as 57% of these cases are not reported." Despite these reported cases, as recently as the August fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Of the ISD Board, the district refuses to acknowledge the issue, but the. Pervasiveness of these reports indicates a systematic. Systemic, excuse me, issue within the district that must be addressed in a matter more. Than this week's inclusion of antisemitism in the code of conduct."
I hate that word, systematic. It's such a airy word that means nothing.
It means that it's really deep involved, like almost at a root level.
How can you prove that?
I don't know.
This could just be kids being kids bullying other kids, and they picked this one thing this year.
This has been going on for about three years now. So it's, it's not just this one year, or I guess the previous school year, cause the new school year is just starting.
I don't know.
Many of the antisemitic actions center around the wearing of, uh. The traditional shawl, uh, cultural clothing. Covering the head or outside to protect from the intensity of the Middle Eastern sun. I believe it's called a kaffiyah. But it has increasingly become a political statement among those with no ties. To the Middle Eastern culture. Especially prevalent is the black and white version, often referred to as the Arafat scarf. Which has close ties to Hamas and the popular front of the liberation of Palestine. Both organizations, which the United States has designated as terrorist organizations. Since this attire has only become widespread on your campuses after the attacks of October seventh, twenty twenty-three. It is clear that these are meant as a symbol and violate. The district's co- dress code policy against attire that is demeaning or inciting a violence. Several instances have been reported of instructors presenting material. That can be considered non-neutral in nature. And insisting that students take a pro-Palestinian viewpoint as the correct response. When.
Why would you do that to your students?
I don't know, that's just cruel. When contacted about this material, the administration has reportedly responded to the material, was not approved. It is, however, the duty of the administration to verify that the approved curriculum is the one being taught. Beyond curriculum, school-sponsored pro-Palestinian walkouts were permitted. Where the students chanted, "From the river to the sea, Palestine will be free." The documentation for these protests indicates that the school would provide excused absences. For the involved students rather than enforcing the student code of conduct. Which has a policy against demeaning, derogatory, harmful, or hurtful behavior. We are never to forget that Jews cannot fight antisemitism alone. The victim cannot cure the crime, the hated cannot cure the hate. It would be the greatest mistake for Jews to believe that they can fight it alone. The only people who can successfully combat antisemitism are those active in the cultures that harbor it. May close, thank you for your attention to the support matter, signed both by Congressman Keith Self and Congressman Pat Fallon.
I love how they're like, Jews cannot fight it alone, yeah, we're too frickin' small.
I'm gonna talk about two things. From the river to the sea, this is a hateful chant. I don't know if the kids are aware.
They don't know what it means, they've just heard it being said, they know it's a pro-Palestinian thing and they're just saying it.
So, Israel is bordered by the Mediterranean Sea and the Jordan. Everywhere in between there is Israel, it's why they have the two blue stripes on the white flag. And the star of David in the middle, the star of David is Israel. One line represents the Mediterranean and the other line represents the Jordan. When you say from the river to the sea, Palestine will be free, it means there is no more Israel. There is no more Jews there, because, I'm sorry, but Hamas is not going to allow Jews. To live in Israel if they take control over it. Now.
They will be gone either one of two ways. Death, or they were able to flee in time. There will be another Holocaust.
So, I'm going to elaborate on the, uh. Scarf, the Palestinian, that they have deemed the Palestinian scarf or kaffiyah. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that wrong. It comes from a historic city in Iraq. Where it was first produced, I think it's pronounced Kufa, K-U-F-A. It was worn originally by Babylonians. And Shumarians as early as three thousand one hundred B.C. Way before Muslims even existed, way before there was ever such a thing as Palestinians. It is used for protection against the desert, not for political theater. Even its iconic net-like pattern had meaning. It symbolizes fishnets, fishing nets, and trade routes. A tribute to Mesopotamian life and labor, not militant resistance.
Realistic.
Resistance. Palestinian factions like the PLO. And Hamas later appropriated it, using it as a mask during attacks. And falsely branding it as their symbol. So the next time you wrap it around your neck is a protest.
At a protest.
At a protest, remember this, you are not wearing a symbol of liberation. You are wearing stolen Iraqi heritage.
Wait, there's a name that they.
Yes, there is a name, this person who has wrote this, Amjad.
Amjad Taha.
Taha, okay. So, it's basically cultural appropriation. And it's especially cultural appropriation because Palestinians are not the ones wearing it at these protests sometimes. It's now American kids who have no connection to the Middle East, Iraqi culture, or Palestine. Quote-unquote Palestine, or Palestinians. Also, another thing. The Board of Trustees, at their most recent meeting, denied. They are under investigation by the DOJ and the TEA, Texas Education Association and Department of Justice. This is a total lie. Even Keith Self, Congressman Keith Self, and, uh, Pat Fallon. Said it in their le- they referenced the investigation in their letter, so. Pretty much, it's a lie. The school board also claimed that they had only five incidents of antisemitism.
Yeah, they're just saying that to cover their butts.
Five incidents of when? This year? Last school year? Like, what are we talking about? No, that's also not true either. So, we'll keep you posted on this, but. Plano schools needs to step up and stop this. Because you well know that if this was gays. Who were being, uh.
You could just say if it was any other race or identity.
Any other.
Identity.
Identity.
Ethnicity.
They would be on this immediately and put a stop to it. But because it's Jews, they don't care.
Oh, and it'd be all over the news, you'd see it everywhere.
I'm only seeing dribs and drabs, I have not seen it on like. Your big major cable network.
No, cause they don't care, no one cares about Jews. No one. That's why I'm just tired. I'm just tired and depressed.
I'm sorry. Well, I must say though, this does at least give me. Or, should I say, I'm glad now even more. That I sent you to private Jewish school. And a private high school, cause you never had to deal with this.
I don't know if anyone had to deal with this back, back then, it was, that was a couple of years ago.
Some kids, they left this district when you were in.
High school.
High school. Uh, a Jewish high school. They, they said they left their, their district because they were being bullied because they were Jewish.
A few, yeah.
Wasn't the same kind of thing, it was different.
It wasn't, I don't feel like it was at the same level either, I feel like it was just a few.
Yeah, it was, you know, tearing off their yarmulkes and kippas and. Tugging on their tassels, you know.
Saying mean things.
Yeah, this is, this is at another level since the attacks of October seventh. This has really got to another level. All right, we'll keep you posted, hopefully this will have a conclusion soon. Let us go to our very important dog, Zeus. Zeus is a friendly boy who is about five years of age, he is a smart dog who will make a great companion for you. He is a playful dog who was never claimed by his owner. One of his eyes is, has a genetic defect, but it sure doesn't slow him down. He is an active and sweet boy who really wants a new home. He is so affectionate and just a love bug. So if you're interested in Zeus, or any pit bull for that matter. Please go to www.planospoliticalpitbull.com. And click on the link Pit Bulls for Adoption. Underneath a very cute picture of Mr. Zeus.
You'll fall in love when you see him.
That is all the time we have for today. Please remember to like, share, and subscribe, and if you would like to leave a comment, we would graciously. And greatly appreciate that. This is Esther.
This is Ruth.
For Plano's Political Pitbull, signing off.